Those who saw some.
The 13th meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. Counselor Harris is excused this evening and all other council members are present. At this time, we would like you to rise for a silent invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance which will be led by Counselor Gibson.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please no loud out, no loud outbursts or no applause or any other outburst. If we are respectful of one another, the meeting will go much smoother. And at this time, we are under proclamations and presentations. And the first proclamation will be read by Counselor Davis and Counselor Gibson. Counselor Davis or Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite down a few members from the community, including Mr. Adrian Carver from EQ&amp;M, Craig LaBarge from LaSparza from Albuquerque Pride, Tony Larson from Albuquerque Pride, and I think they have some other guests as well. And then defer to my colleague, Counselor Gibson.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming down. You want to go ahead? We'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then invite you up and to give it to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge, for being here. Whereas the month of June is celebrated nationwide as Pride Month by the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, and queer questioning community commemorating the anniversary of our Stonewall Rebellion in New York on June 28th in 1969, which most historians consider to be the birth of the modern LGBTIQ movement. Whereas Albuquerque Pride's, the Albuquerque Pride Parade began in 1976 and has grown from 25 individuals marching on the sidewalk down central to the week-long Pride Fest now celebrating and attracting over 30,000 participants to celebrate in our city. And whereas Albuquerque has been home to LGBTIQ events, including the Way Out Film Festival for over 15 years during which it has presented more than 400 films and grown to be one of the state's and the southwest's largest film festivals for LGBTIQ people.
And whereas Albuquerque residents have been honorably and well represented in the state legislature, state offices, and local government by LGBTIQ leaders. And whereas during this year's Pride Fest, there will be a candlelight vigil on Thursday, a free event with an art reception, music, festival, and movie in the park. On Friday, the Pride Parade, and main event on Saturday, and out at the state, out at the fair on Sunday. And whereas the city is proud to, of the great work of the many LGBTIQ supportive organizations operating within the city and shares their visions of fully inclusive communities that will add to the quality of life for children and adult LGBTIQ people. Be it proclaimed by the City Council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby honors our LGBTIQ community and celebrates the month of June as LGBTIQ Pride Month.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis and Councilwoman Gibson, and all of our council that are up at the front. My name is Craig LaBarge of LaSparza, president of Albuquerque Pride. For 42 years plus, Albuquerque Pride has worked hard, played hard, and celebrated with our community. And with your continued help and support, we look forward to continued years of celebrating our community and bringing it to the forefront of our city of Albuquerque. Thank you, guys.
Tony?
My name is Tony Carson, and I am the director of the Pride Parade, which will be happening this Saturday. And I wanted to share with everybody that I am a refugee of the socially retarded South. My hometown is a little town in South Carolina, and I made my home here in Albuquerque about 20 years ago. And I have loved it. It has been a wonderful place to be. I had no idea I was coming to a place that was going to be so gay-friendly and allow me to be the person that I'm meant to be. My husband and I got married two years ago, and I'm really proud to say that when we went to the local bakery, they were glad to sell us a cake. So, I love this town, and I'm looking forward to being a part of it for a long time.
Neil?
I just want to say thank you for everyone in the council and also in the city of Albuquerque as well as the rest of the state. But we've been able to do amazing things that express the diversity and the inclusion that our community is all about, and I'm thankful for that. And I look forward to many years of expressing that, expressing the diversity that we have to the world and let everyone know that we are a place where everyone is welcome here.
And we welcome you and our parade back to Nob Hill this year, Saturday morning. Thank you, and we hope you all join us. Come up and.
The next proclamation is recognizing the Optimist Club of Albuquerque, sponsored walkathon for UNM Pediatric Oncology. And the proclamation will be received by Fred Trussell, and Counselor Davis will read the proclamation on behalf of Counselor Harris.
Mr. Trussell, thanks so much for joining us, and thanks for the members of the Optimists. I know you have some members here, so thanks. I'm going to read this on behalf of Counselor Harris, who sponsored this but wasn't able to be here tonight. And whereas, the Optimist International is a worldwide volunteer organization made up of more than 2,500 local clubs, whose members work each day to make the future brighter by bringing out the best in children, in their communities, and in themselves. And whereas, the Optimist Clubs of Albuquerque are dedicated to supporting all of the rigorous research and hard work that is being done at the UNM Cancer Center to cure childhood cancer. And whereas, cancer is the most prevalent childhood disease today, killing more children than asthma, cystic fibrosis, and AIDS combined. And whereas, according to statistics from the American Cancer Association, there are approximately 12,400 children from birth to 19 who are diagnosed with cancer every year. Childhood cancer is the most under-researched form of cancer in the United States. And whereas, up to 75% of childhood cancer can be cured. And whereas, more than 400,000 patient years of life are being saved each year using newly-developed treatments for children with cancer. And whereas, walkathons provide a low-intensity, easily-accessible fundraising model that is an ideal for mobilizing broad-based community support, including participants from a wide range of ages and economic backgrounds. And whereas, funds raised from childhood cancer campaigns can be used in our community to provide support for family members and care partners to purchase equipment and to help healthcare providers treating children in advanced pediatric oncology research. And so be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of this city of Albuquerque, hereby honors the Optimist Clubs of Albuquerque and the UNM Childhood Cancer Center for all that they do in our community to cure childhood cancer, and welcomes the Pediatric Oncology Project Pop Walkathon this Saturday, June 9th. So, welcome and thank you for your work in our community.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. I'm representing the Greater Albuquerque Optimist Clubs, which goes all the way from Bernalillo to Berlin, and we have about seven clubs in the area. So, we are enthused to work with this walkathon. We did something like this many years ago, and so we've reinvigorated this. And we're hoping that it makes a great fundraising effort. We're looking forward to, we're hoping, a large participation this coming Saturday. And we look forward to all the participation that we can get, and appreciate the council honoring us like this. Thank you.
And we have one more proclamation. And the final proclamation is recognizing National CPR and AED Awareness Week. This proclamation will be received by Dr. Abenash, and I think it's Artraker. I'd like you to come up with some of your colleagues. And I'm going to have Counselor Benton and also Counselor Penya to read that proclamation. Welcome, Doctor.
Thank you.
Counselor Benton?
Hey, Mr. President. Well, the proclamation reads as follows. Hereas, heart disease affects men, women, and children of every age and race in the United States, and it continues to be the leading cause of death in America. And whereas cardiac arrest results from an abnormal heart rhythm, like ventricular fibrillation in most adults, and approximately 350,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur annually nationwide. And whereas, unfortunately, only about 40% of out-of-hospital cardiac arrest victims receive bystander CPR. And sadly, nine out of 10 cardiac arrest victims will not survive. And whereas, prompt delivery of CPR can double or triple the victim's chance of survival by helping to maintain vital blood flow to the heart and brain, increasing the amount of time in which an electric shock from a defibrillator may be effective. And whereas, an automatic external defibrillator, or AED, even when used by a bystander, is safe, easy to operate, and if used immediately after the onset of cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest, highly effective in restarting the heart. And...
And whereas, for every minute without CPR, survival from witnessed cardiac arrest decreases about 10%. And in the instance when the time between the initial 911 telephone call and the arrival of emergency medical services, EMS, personnel could be longer than five minutes. A cardiac arrest victim's survival is likely dependent on a bystander trained in CPR who takes action and who has access to a lifesaving AED. And whereas, the American Heart Association, the American Red Cross, and the National Safety Council are preparing a public awareness and training campaign to educate communities about lifesaving CPR and AED use, to be held during the first week of June. And whereas, we commend the good work of the American Heart Association, the American Red Cross, the National Safety Council, and encourage all Americans to become properly trained in CPR and AED usage. And whereas, together, we can save more lives in our community, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby proclaims June 1st through June 7th as National CPR/AED Awareness Week.
Thank you very much. I'm here with Terry Archavec, our executive director, and I'm Abenash Artraker. I'm one of the associate professors of cardiology at UNM. I'm also the president of the American Heart Association for the state here in New Mexico and a member of our advocacy committee. And I wanted to thank all the counselors, as it's so important that we say time is myocardium or time is heart muscle. Every minute matters. I'm looking in the room, there's an AED in here. And I'm hoping all of us at some time in our lives gets to see one, so we're comfortable using them. And hands-only CPR has proven to be very, very efficient and beneficial to a patient's health, so much so that the American Heart Association, with community partners, has worked with having CPR, hands-only CPR, as a graduation requirement for New Mexican students. Because our healers are in our community when these things happen, and I wanted to thank the council once again for the proclamation. Thank you. Did you want to say something, Terry?
As the executive director for the American Heart Association for New Mexico, I also want to thank you for allowing us to have this great week to bring awareness to the need for CPR and AEDs in our state, our city. You are helping to save lives, so thank you.
Thank you. We'd like you to come up and receive the proclamation. And we, as city councilors, do have a heart. That concludes proclamations and presentations. We are now under item four, Economic Development Discussion. There is none this evening. The next item on the agenda is item five, Administrative Question and Answers. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Nyir, I want to just get started, and I know, I think Chief Ross is going to join us here really quickly. I want to catch up really quickly. We've been deferring these questions about the case of the young seven-year-old who was ultimately identified as a potential victim of sexual abuse and sex trafficking here in our city. And we've been deferring those questions for a few weeks because we wanted to give APD time to, and the administration time, to do their internal affairs investigation, to look into sort of how we got to that place. And I realize that that's still underway, but there's some all sorts of new information. Over the weekend, the administration and the chief sort of took a second look and said they want to take a new look at how they had evaluated this case and our options. And I wanted to ask a couple of specific questions, if it's okay with you. And I think Chief Ross and I were talking, and I think we can give the public some assurance that we're on the right track, I hope, if that's okay. I think the first question that really came up was, after the Omari Varela case in 2014, there was an APD and city task force put together for child abuse prevention to look at how the city can work better with other agencies and how we can evaluate all of our processes to ensure that if an officer shows up on a scene that might indicate neglect, as in the case of Omari, that officers have the tools and the resources available to intervene. And I think there are some concerns in this case that even though the officer seems to have followed the publicly announced protocols by calling a detective, there was a CYFD person there, they did extensive interviews with teachers and people that were concerned for the child. At the end of the day, the officers, the department as a whole failed to initiate a sort of follow-up neglect or care investigation. Can you tell us, if you're aware, the department has implemented the recommendations from the 2014 task force, or what needs to be done there?
Sure. Counsel President Sanchez and Counselor Davis, first, thank you for bringing this up in this public forum, because we want to be able to speak to the public as often as we can to, you know, address these issues. They're a top priority for us right now. And as Chief of Staff Ross makes his way down here, I'll just start out by saying a couple of things. First is, we are in the middle of the internal affairs investigation. That takes 90 days by policy. It could go up to 120. But as soon as that is available for public release, we will make sure that everyone knows the outcome of that investigation. We are anticipating seeing problems of two natures. One would be where we had policies and maybe people did not follow them. We don't know if that's the case yet, but that's what the investigation is about. The bigger, more complicated problem is when we have policies and they still weren't enough to get the job done to protect this child, because we all agree that the outcome tells us that we didn't do enough, right? We don't, we don't need to identify, pinpoint problems to know we didn't do enough because, you know, this happened. So, in terms of policies, I'll allow Mr. Ross to elaborate on that, but we are going to roll out some improved policies. And I think one thing we've learned from the DOJ as well as from this is, writing a policy is not enough. You have to train on it, you have to push it out, and you have to have accountability every single time it's not followed. Otherwise, it's only as good as the paper that it's written on. And so, as we look at changing policy, we're also looking at how do we make sure that there's a level of awareness and accountability about the policies that we have on the books and about the policies that we're going to roll out. So, Chief, go ahead.
Counsel President Sanchez and Counselor Davis, like Ms. Nyir said, we are looking into some of those policies that either were there and just went enough, or that were not there. Or even new ones that have come about during our preliminary inquiry. And again, the full internal affairs investigation will further those policy reviews. Again, that's 90 to 120 days, but right now, we're looking at revamping the, or instituting policies on evidence gathering and working with the RTCC with our field officers and our specialty units. And, there was one more. And, oh, and the recording, the OBRD, how long we're going to keep those. And we have some storage. Evidence.com is where we store those, and we're exploring to the length of time we're going to store those, especially in juvenile cases.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, if I can follow very briefly. I, you know, I just want to ask, I think that the two things that stand out to me are the evidence in particular issues. You know, obviously, we don't require, we would never require police officers to have probable cause for a crime in order to seize items that were publicly available if they might be useful in a later investigation. And I just want to be sure, and I think the public wants to be sure, that regardless of what happened in this case, that APD is taking a serious look at our evidence policies, and it sounds like we're starting that path, to be sure that if someone presents something that might be useful for a further investigation down the road, that our officers feel like they have the training and the support to take those items into evidence and not worry about space at the lab, or who can do the investigative work. But surely that, at least they are empowered, that if something could be evidence, that we have the proper policies in place to do that and the training. Is that something APD is looking at in the future for how we might address these issues?
Yes, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis? Yes, that is correct. We are looking at those policies, and we have many eyes on them, to ensure that that is the case. We want to make sure that the evidence, the type of evidence we can take and that we will take in the future is in the best interest of the child and of the department and of the processes that go through the justice system.
Thanks. And I think my final question here is sort of twofold, but can you tell us, what is the police officer's obligation or responsibility of the SOPs to make a determination about neglect when it's time to take a child out of a situation? I know in this case, we had a CYFD person who was consulted, and we had a detective from Crimes Against Children that was consulted about the criminal aspects of these cases. And it's whether or not, in this case, any kind, officers did have some access to CYFD and prior records involving this family. I think the question is, or the concern comes that from the 2014 task force, the number-one recommendation was that APD and CYFD work to unite all their records, to be sure that when an officer responds to a family, they have access to the full picture, and quite frankly, that CYFD has access to information that APD might have that's not necessarily in their system. And I realize that you weren't in this position, Ms. Nyir wasn't, our new administration wasn't. But I think it's really important that we feel like the APD has implemented those recommendations from that task force or seriously evaluated it. I'm curious if that is part of the agency's evaluation now, for did we do those things and do we have the right pieces in place?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, that's the right question to ask. So, as to the specifics of whether officers and detectives involved in this case followed policy, that's for the internal affairs investigation. But we know that the policy regarding access to the real-time Crime Center information was only distributed to the real-time Crime Center employees. It wasn't pushed out to the field.
Right.
So, another key thing that you said in your earlier question was, we have to give officers support. And we have to make sure that they know what they're supposed to do and that that training occurs, that policies are addressed towards the people who actually need to understand them, so that then whatever decisions they make, they have the force of policy behind them. And unfortunately, with that particular instance, that's not what happened. But we're changing that.
Thanks. Mr. President and Ms. Nyir, if I could just ask, and perhaps from the department, if you could help us at a future meeting as quickly as possible, perhaps, if someone could take a deliberate look at the 2014 recommendation from the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force for APD and report back to us publicly through the city council, sort of whether those recommendations were implemented, if not, what the, why they weren't by the old administration, and whether any of those still need to be reviewed. I think it's critical that we take the recommendations and from a case that clearly had problems from the beginning four years ago, and see if there's anything we can do to prevent the next one, because our officers are responding to hundreds of these calls every week. And we know that, I know you all know that. I know our officers are worried that they want to do the right thing every time. But certainly, if we have better ideas that are still sitting on a shelf, let's be sure we get them out as quickly as possible.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, that's already underway, and we would be happy to report back on that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Benton?
Hey, Mr. President. This is a question I don't expect to have an answer to tonight, but I think, I've been approached by a couple of constituents asking how the decision was made to add the, I guess you call it, enhanced security at Isotopes Park. This is the first year that we've had a metal detector there at the park, and some people like it, some people don't. I don't think anybody really likes going through one. But nonetheless, we, some of us accept it. But the question was raised, and I didn't know how that decision was made.
Mr. President and Counselor Benton, the contractor at Isotopes Park and had a preliminary meeting with myself and our facilities folks here at the city. As you know, the facility folks are the ones that maintain the actual baseball stadium. They had a number of incidences that occurred last year during the baseball season that gave rise to some concerns to some of the public and some of their staff. The staff from APD also was consulted. And so, the idea was to buy those portable, if you will, screens so that we can make sure that we had as high a safety as we possibly could in the facility. The good news about those screens is that not only are they, are they good for that season, for the season, if you will, but they're portables. We can use them in other facilities if we absolutely need them there in the future. So, it was really a request of the, of all the parties that really helped to maintain the security of the facility.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Are there any other questions for the administration? Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to item six, which is the journal. And I move approval of the May 21st Journal. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penya. Any questions? See none? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on item seven, that is communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Davis?
I'm sure I do, although I don't.
Then let's go to Counselor Gibson, and we'll go back to Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R44 and placing it on the June 18th council agenda for final action. R44 is approving the appointment of a director to fill a vacancy on the governing board of the Winrock Town Center Tax Increment Development Districts 1 and 2, and repealing all actions inconsistent with this resolution.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton, that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R44 and placing it on the June 19th council agenda for final action. Any questions? See none? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Back to Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies for earlier. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R43 and placing it on the June 18th council agenda for final action. R43 approves the appointment of a director to fill a vacancy on the governing body of the Mesa del Sol boards 1 through 5 and repealing all the actions inconsistent with this resolution.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penya to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R43 and placing it on the June 18th council agenda for final action. Any questions? See none? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Counselor Benton?
Hey, Mr. President. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing O22 and placing it on... it on the June 18 Council Agenda for Final Action. O-22 is approving a project involving Infomedia Group, doing business as CareNet Healthcare Services pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and City Ordinance, Floor Substitute O-0410. The city is implementing legislation for that act to support the renovation and construction of 23,452 square feet of commercial rental space in downtown Albuquerque and related improvements for a healthcare customer service call center, authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement, and other documents in connection with the project, making certain determinations and findings related to the project, ratifying certain actions taken previously, and repealing all actions inconsistent with this ordinance.
We have a motion and a second that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing O-22 and placing it on the June 18 Council Agenda for Final Action. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. I move the letter of introduction. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Reports of committee, there are none this evening. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals at this time? Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you. Let's see, I'm going to defer O-19. Move deferral for that. It is approving a project involving Albuquerque Investors LLC and Top Golf USA Albuquerque LLC pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and the Local Economic Development Act Plan Ordinance to support the construction of a sports entertainment and restaurant services facility to be located on a 14-acre infill site and related improvements. I'm moving the deferral until June 18.
We have a motion and a second to defer O-19 until June 18. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under the Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the Consent Agenda? Before we vote on that, I'd like to ask any individual that is here tonight on the Consent Agenda who is being appointed or considered for an appointment to serve on boards and commissions to please stand and be recognized this evening. If you're in the audience, please stand. If not, let's go and proceed. I move approval of the Consent Agenda. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Winter. Any questions? Well, that's Consent Agenda, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We're going to move the agenda around just a bit. I am going to go to Item D, that is Counselor Sanchez, Penya, and Counselor Gibson, R-28, and then we will go to General Public Comment. If you have signed up for the General Public Comment and wanted to speak on the Top Golf issue, if you would please go to the council staff, and we will give you that opportunity to speak on this agenda item. Okay, let's go ahead and go to R-28. That is relating to economic development assistance in support of a proposed Top Golf project at the former Beach Water Park site near the intersection of I-25 and Montano Boulevard. I move a due pass. We have a motion and a second. Did you want to hear from the public first, and then we can go to the different amendments in the bill? And I'm going to pull your name off the, if you've not signed up, if you signed up under General Public Comments, I will ask you to come and speak on this agenda item. We've got Jennifer Ellen, Lisa Ellen Urea, Gail Bremer, Melissa Henry, and Jim Trump. Once your name has been called, if you would please come to the front, we have seating available for you, and be prepared to speak. Jennifer?
Yes.
Where are you?
Sorry, I always got a little confused.
Okay, not a problem. Welcome.
Thank you. You guys don't know me, but you know my work. For nearly two years, I was the graphic designer for Steve Miestis of NAI Miestis &amp; Ward, and two years after that, I was the graphic designer for Winrock Town Center and Hotel Landaloo's. Currently, I'm a freelance graphic designer specializing in commercial real estate here in Albuquerque, New Mexico. I am the graphic designer to 73 commercial real estate firms, sorry, five of which are here in Albuquerque. I oversee the graphic design and marketing of over 5 million square feet from February of 2017 to June 4 of 2018. Sorry, so nervous. So, I specialize in commercial real estate and in graphic design. I have a lot of clients all over the United States, and I do have five clients here in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Most recently, last week, I worked on a $100 million project in Prosper, Texas. I pulled some reports that I think you guys would be interested in hearing. In Texas, this is the Dallas metropolitan area, the historic growth from 2000 to 2018 is 23.3%. The average household income for this city is 147, I'm sorry, is 149,000. In Phoenix, Arizona, where there is a Top Golf, the historic growth from 2018, which will be next year, to 2023 is 2%. In Denver, Colorado, where there is a Top Golf, the projected growth from 2018 to 2023 is 1.5%. Dallas, Texas, where there is a Top Golf, the growth was 2%.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Albuquerque is 0.5%.
My apologies, but you're allowed two minutes, and your time has expired, but thank you very much. Lisa Ellen Urea, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Lisa Ellen Urea. I have been a commercial real estate broker in Albuquerque for the last 15 years, and I've been pursuing Top Golf for the last six years. I represent the seller of the project. I handed out a sheet that shows what Denver, Thornton, provided to bring Top Golf to that area, and also El Paso, which is significantly more than what is being asked of the city council and the city of Albuquerque to provide to bring Top Golf to Albuquerque. It's just the way it is. These are the types of deals that have to be made in order to get this kind of increase in the multiplier. When we were at the Albuquerque Economic Commission, the Bernco gal came out and said it was going to be something like 246 million over 20 years. I also included a letter from Rick Bennett, who is a local architect and is also in support of the project. We really would appreciate your support in bringing this to Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gail Bremer, followed by Melissa Henry.
Good evening, my name is Gail Bremer. I have been in Albuquerque for well over 40 years, and I am an avid golfer. I support this project. I can't help but think that it would not help our economic growth here in Albuquerque, especially with the lack of entertainment in this city, which I think if we have more of that, I think that it would help us with many of our problems that are in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Trump.
I represent the owners of the property. I've been involved with the former Beach Water Park for probably 20 years now. Unfortunately, we had to tear that down, but when we tore it down, we created a void in people getting together and socializing and entertainment. That area is becoming an entertainment district with Main Event, which I've heard is doing just absolutely fantastic. There is another entertainment venue coming across the street, across the freeway, that is going to be creating a real district for entertainment and a place for our kids to go to. Our millennials do not have a place to go. They are missing out, we are lacking entertainment events. I support this project.
Thank you, Jim. Steve Abraham, followed by Brian Tremco, followed by Jeff Henry, followed by Keenan, I guess, Urea, and then Christina Rodrick. Welcome.
Council President Sanchez, counselors. My name is Steve Abraham. I was born and raised here in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and I'm here to support whatever it takes to bring Top Golf to the city of Albuquerque. I think there's a lot to be said for family entertainment, a lot to be said for jobs, and a lot to be said for the grocery receipts tax that it'll bring in. When I visit my daughter and her family in Arizona, the first thing I do is plan a trip to Top Golf, and they love it. And my grandkids are seven, four, and two, and we just have a ball every time we go there. So, I would just plead with the council to please take this opportunity to make Albuquerque a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tremco, welcome.
Thank you, sir. My name's Brian Tremco, I'm with the Carpenters Union. I also am here to speak in support of Top Golf for many reasons. Number one, I'm a parent. I've got a son who's served 18 years in the military, he's looking at his exit plan with retirement, and he's looking for a place that has recreation and things like that for his family and entertainment, and this is one of the things he's looking for. He's talked to me about these. Just this past weekend, they went to one of those parasail things where they float like they're on a parachute, which is what Jim Trump was referring to, that they're going to build here over by Main Event. So, that's coming, and so, these things are important to Albuquerque. It's also good for economic development. It creates jobs, not only for construction, but also for college kids, high school kids, and those are badly needed. When I was in high school, there were jobs, but nowadays, kids have a hard time finding places to go to work. Furthermore, it is an entertainment zone. We've got the Main Event, we've got bowling, we've got movie theaters in that area, and adding this in will just be another attraction to guests that come to Albuquerque, including those that come to our Blume Fiesta Park. It's right down the road, so it's a win for us. Businesses, when they're looking to develop in a new area, they look at things like Top Golf. What is here for my people? What can we offer? This is a win for New Mexico, it's a win for Albuquerque, and the carpenters support it.
Thank you. Jeff Henry, followed by Christina Rodrick, followed by Ron Bohannon, followed by Sunny Leaper.
Good evening. I'm here to support Top Golf as well, for many reasons. I think a lot of you understand why Top Golf would be helpful to the city of Albuquerque, to the youth, to the entertainment, to the tax base, and even yourselves would probably have a good time there. It's a very happy, family entertainment facility that Albuquerque could certainly benefit from. I urge you to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Rodrick, followed by Ron Bohannon, followed by Sunny Leaper. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, counselors. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Christina Rodrick, and I'm an Albuquerque native, born and raised here. I've been a commercial real estate broker for about 17 years, and I support Top Golf coming to Albuquerque because, one, it will bring more resident, or our residents will have the opportunity to go and do something fun, and I also agree that when people come for events like the Blume Fiesta, they will be more inclined to go because they have nothing else to do during the rest of the day. It will also generate grocery receipts to a property that's been dormant for over 17 years, and then these attendees will also patronize surrounding businesses, including the restaurants, the hotels, the shopping, and some of these other entertainment venues. And I believe that this will be a boon to Albuquerque economic development, so please support Top Golf. Thank you.
Ron Bohannon.
Thank you. Ron Bohannon, 5571 Midway Park Place, second generation. You're going to hear from a third generation Bohannon, and we're raising a fourth generation Bohannon. We're not going anywhere, we're staying here. One of the things that I'd like to bring to the attention is the industry of golf. One thing that everybody's been talking about is entertainment. A lot of you don't know, my stepfather is actually a golf pro, has been a golf pro all his life. The industry of golf is a very large industry, the state is actually pretty rich in golf industries. New Mexico State has one of the best golf management courses in the world. So, I would like you to look at this as an industry, because what you don't realize with Top Golf is it actually promotes the game of golf. This place, you can go out and you can pick up a club, never have picked up a club, go play this three or four times, and you start feeling pretty good. All of a sudden, now you find yourself on a golf course. So, it actually promotes golf. One of the things that we need to do in this city, as you all know, is that all, our golf needs to be raised. This is one of the good areas. The other good thing that, why this location, site locators are very specific on site locations. This site meets all their boxes, it checks all the boxes, and one of the things that's really important is, there's no neighborhoods. There are no neighborhoods around this area. You try to stick this anywhere else in Albuquerque, and I can guarantee you, we would probably have a packed room of neighbors pretty upset with what we're doing. So, this is an ideal location, it's centrally located, it's really part of an emerging entertainment area. The last thing is, it's blighted. This, as mentioned, people, this has been blighted for a long time. This is a way of putting this property back into service, put it back on the tax rolls and make it work, plus it's a good use of lead of dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Mr. Bohannon, if you don't mind, I just have something to ask you about. I had a conversation with somebody over the weekend about this project, and they said, well, that doesn't seem like it's a very good location for it. Top Golf should be over by Uncle Cliff's, or we should just put a restaurant in there, and I pointed out that it's been vacant, that area's been vacant for, you know, a long, long time, well over 10 years. And what would you, what would you say to someone who offered those suggestions for that property or for Top Golf?
So, one of the things, the reason it hits this checkbox is, one, it's on I-25, it's in the, pretty much, if you look at the area, it's pretty centrally located from the west side via Montano, Paseo, the northeast heights, and then via I-25 and I-40 to the south part of that area. It's got great visibility, we just got approval of our New Mexico DOT access points off of the frontage road, so we're actually improving those access points as well. From checkbox standpoint, again, it's making sure that it meets all of Top Golf's criteria. A lot of that is visibility, and so, it's a fine edge between being visible and then being right next to a neighborhood that, we have poles that are 170 feet tall, we've depressed the site, we're bringing it up a certain area, so we've actually minimized that a little bit, but it's, it has impacts, and this is a good site to meet all of those requirements.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Sunny Leaper, followed by Derek Bohannon. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, counselors. So, I'm here in support of Top Golf. I believe that it's going to fill a site that's been vacant for many years, and it's going to create jobs while it's being built, it's going to create jobs after the fact, and it's going to add to the quality of life in New Mexico and in Albuquerque. I just attended a conference in September in Arizona, and one of the reasons they held the conference there is because there was a Top Golf there. That was one of the draws, and so, like Mr. Bohannon says, it checks boxes as we go along. So, I definitely support the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Derek Bohannon, followed by Richard Stevenson, and the last speaker will be David Barber.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fully in favor and support of Top Golf. Many of you know me, I serve as the chair to the Environmental Planning Commission. One of the things I noticed when looking at this site is, this checks a lot of the boxes where it most likely would not have to come in front of the Environmental Planning Commission. Why is that significant? Because the zoning that's in place envisioned an amusement recreational facility like this. It's the long-term vision of the city planners of previous councils before us, of previous commissions before me, that saw this corner for this type of facility. As Ron stated earlier, minimal impact to the neighbors, great economic impact, golf to our youth teaches integrity, teaches self-reliance, teaches self-monitoring and honesty. The community needs that as much as they need us. This is a project that needs to be built at this location, it needs to be built for the city, and I think it'll have nothing but great success, and I urge all of your counselors support in this project.
Thank you. And I have one question. Are you the third generation of Bohannons who live here in Albuquerque?
I am the third, and the fourth is my little son Liam, who is four years old, and we'll see if he gets into real estate development and engineering. I have a feeling he probably will.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Richard Stevenson.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Richard Stevenson. I'm a resident here in Albuquerque, 2733 Utah Street. I'm in support of the project. I think Top Golf is an excellent facility. I visited the Top Golf in Dallas with family, and it was a lot of fun. Top Golf is a very well-known brand. Topgolf is a very well-known brand. I think it'll be a great attraction for us here in the city. Topgolf has already made its way down under to Australia. I think it's about time that we had it here in Albuquerque, and I think we should welcome them. My ninety-two-year-old great aunt has polished the dust off her drivers. She is very much looking forward to hitting golf balls at the facility. I also think, in business today, a lot of deals are now going to be done at Topgolf facilities. I ask that you support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker on this item is going to be David Barber. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, honored board members, I also would like to stand in support of this project. I am a retired lifelong resident of Albuquerque. I think this will be an excellent opportunity for entertainment. You've heard all of the arguments that I've got written down here. I know that they have asked for some incentives from the city, and it's my understanding that the tax base that they bring back will far exceed those incentives, and I would just strongly urge you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe that we have a presentation from members of Topgolf.
We do, Mr. President. We've got Mr. Tanner McKelley from Topgolf and Drew Snyder here to begin. And then we've got Justin Horowitz and other members of the applicant team, if you have any questions.
That'll be fine. Let's go to their presentation, then we will open it for questions, and then we will go to amendments.
Can you see that? Can you see that okay? Both of them working?
Drew, state your full name for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Drew Snyder. I am the co-manager of Albuquerque Investors. We are the site developer on behalf of Topgolf, one of the applicants, under the LEED request, and very excited to be here to present to council this evening. So by way of background, we started this project about a year ago, and it has been a very exciting project for the city of Albuquerque. We, through viewing multiple sites in the city, selected the former beach water park site, which I have an aerial pulled up here. I've obviously spoken to the council significantly about this. The council's support has been tremendous. We think it is just a great fit for the site and for the market. Topgolf, which, again, Tanner McKelley from Topgolf is here. He's ready to answer any questions, speak on behalf of Topgolf, and their commitment to the site. In reviewing all the options within the market, as the engineering staff said, felt that this was just a perfect fit within Albuquerque. So in sliding to the next page, this is a site rendering, so you can see how the site and the facility would be positioned within the 23-acre property. So the Topgolf facility would be located right along I-25. The hitting bays would be hitting kind of northerly, and this would be a 72-bay facility. We would hope to break ground on this late this year or early 2019, assuming the council is supportive. And so there's three different angles that we can show you of the project. This is looking, I believe, southerly. I always get mixed up directionally here on the site. Another shot of the site and the project. And then here is the site plan. Just to reiterate some of the benefits of the project, it's a $38 million project. We are here before the council asking for a public-private partnership. We believe that the economic benefits, the creation of jobs, the creation of GRT increment, are going to be extremely beneficial to the city of Albuquerque. One of the things in my multiple trips to the city of Albuquerque that I've noticed that has been really interesting is, I would coin the term entertainment leakage. And people that we talk to in the city of Albuquerque that we've said, "Have you been to a Topgolf facility?" Almost everybody says they have, or they're aware of the concept, or they've been to one in Denver. They've been to one in Arizona. They've been to one in Texas, any of these surrounding states. Why not keep those tax dollars local and keep those GRT revenues based in Albuquerque? People, we have found, are leaving the city on the weekends, and they're spending their entertainment dollars in other states, in other cities. And we think this is a great opportunity to keep those GRT dollars local. In addition, provide another entertainment option to the residents of Albuquerque. And so again, we believe it's a great use for the site. We're excited to be here. We're happy to answer any questions tonight. And with that, I want to turn it over to Tanner McKelley with Topgolf. He'll talk a little bit more about the concept.
Thank you, Drew. Council President, members of the council, thank you for your time this evening. My name's Tanner McKelley. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Topgolf. You probably have never seen me before. I'd like to say I'm speaking on behalf of Sanjay Arora. He has much more important things happening in his life right now. His wife is expecting any day, so I'm speaking on behalf of Tanner. So thank you for that, and thank you for all the time you spent with Mr. Arora. A little bit of background, I'm sure you've heard it, but for everybody else who hasn't, Topgolf started, you know, sixteen years ago in North London. Couple guys decided to throw a microchip in a golf ball. They paired that with some local driving ranges who happen to serve food and beverage, and lo and behold, the Topgolf concept was born. Several years later, it came over to the States, and we're now in a position where we have 41 locations globally. Thirty-eight of those are in the United States. We have 12 under construction currently. And by the end of 2019, this is a big stat for us that we're tracking internally, is that by roughly a year from now, we expect to surpass the NFL in the number of visitors that attend our venues across the country. You know, last year, we noted 14 million visitors. We'll bring in, you know, 300 to 350 jobs. You know, we do about 20% to 25% of our revenue comes from corporate events. So we put a big emphasis in attracting the big, you know, office users and providing a nice amenity for them to come and have their quarterly meetings, or monthly meetings, or annual meetings. It's not uncommon for a corporate user to buy out the entire facility in some locations across the country. We're really excited about this opportunity in Albuquerque. You know, we've been looking in Albuquerque for several years now, and the right site really hasn't presented itself. We knew that this site was here, but we needed to partner with somebody like Woodsonia and also have some type of, you know, private partnership in order to get it done. You know, in smaller markets, it's not uncommon for Topgolf to need an incentive. And incentives aren't something that we go for in every municipality. It's something, it's only when it's absolutely needed to get the job done. And we feel like the numbers are strong at this specific location in Albuquerque. We're very confident in that this site is going to be successful and is going to provide a great amenity, not only for the corporate users, but for the community as well. You know, as somebody else mentioned, we have partnerships with the PGA of America. Those partnerships would not be in place if they didn't feel like we were bringing more people to the game of golf. And so, you know, several years back, there was a thought that we would actually drive out local driving ranges. And those local driving ranges that are located near a Topgolf are seeing actual increases in guests coming out because guests are getting comfortable with clubs in their hands, and they want to take their game to the next level. You know, with that, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to be here. We appreciate all the time that you've spent on the project, and we look forward to moving forward with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Counselor Gibson.
Yes, sir. I wonder, may I just ask you a quick question? So do you have any data, or have you seen any data, collected any data, on golf courses in cities where Topgolf has a store, a facility? Is it increased golf games?
Yes. So the USGA actually did a third-party study that showed that driving ranges and golf courses that are located near a Topgolf are actually seeing increases in membership and guest play. You know, I think the partnership with the PGA of America, I think, speaks to that, right? They would not be partnering with a concept that was driving people away from going to golf courses in traditional golf, right? And so, you know, that partnership with the PGA of America, the USGA, the LPGA, I think all speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordego.
Welcome to Albuquerque. I happen to play golf, and I was just wondering about your renderings that you guys were showing earlier. And I just wanted to get kind of a feel for how sort of the game is played there, because you don't have an entire course. So I was just wondering, and for the public's, because there are probably a lot of golfers in Albuquerque, and I'd like them to understand kind of a little more about the concept itself. So could maybe Drew or yourself explain that to us a little bit?
Of course. So it's, we like to refer to it as a high-tech driving range, creating competition among cohorts, family members, you know, or friends. And so it's game-based, so it's basically bowling and darts and golf all combined into a competitive nature. It's really hard to explain, but basically, you're hitting a golf ball that's microchipped. That microchip is tagged with your name. You're hitting it into a driving range that has literally large holes in the ground with this netting structure. Within this netting structure are targets that you're aiming for. Each one of those targets has a point value associated with it. So when you hit your ball that's tagged with your name into one of those netting structures, it registers in our game panel that says you scored, you know, 50 points, right? And so you're now competing against the other members of your bay. Each bay can hold up to six people. So while you're playing and enjoying that golfing experience, we're serving you food and beverage. We have two LED TVs at every bay. You can control what's on those TVs through an app on your phone. We take great pride in the food and the beverage that's served. We have a full team of corporate chefs that back our menu. It's constantly changing, constantly evolving, and our goal is to create a place where people can just come and have a good time.
So literally, it is an entertainment venue. It's not just golf, then?
That's right. So 53% of our guests do not play a single round of golf the entire year. They're coming there merely for the entertainment. And like I say, we've done Disney trainings. We've actually hired Disney to teach us how to provide better guest services so that we can provide a great entertainment recreational experience for young and old, golfers and non-golfers. We want to provide a premier experience for the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Bordego. And I guess we probably now want to hear from your legal team.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name's David Buckholz. I'm an attorney with the Rhodey Law Firm, representing the project here tonight. Happy to be here. I'll keep my comments very brief, but certainly be happy to answer for questions. I worked pretty hard on trying to structure a transaction here that will be helpful to this particular project and also not painful for the city, if you will. So a couple of points on that. There's no industrial revenue bond associated with this project, which means that a $40 million facility is going to go onto the property tax rolls. It's about $400,000, maybe $500,000 a year in property tax. Unlike some of the other economic development projects, which are important, this project will generate a significant amount of grocery receipts taxes, not only in the construction, but also in the activity that occurs there. And part of the project, a LEED plan that we developed, is that this project would share in the growth of those grocery receipts taxes. So it's, in effect, in some sense, paying for itself. We are looking forward to continuing to work on some of the issues that have been raised in public discussion, in discussion with the Development Commission last week. We were sharing documents with the administration. Hopefully, we'll have some useful discussions with the administration. We're expecting a special Development Commission meeting within the next 10 days and before you meet again. And all things being equal, we want to come back in two weeks, get that all behind us and get an ordinance passed. So with that, I'll be happy to stand for questions, but looking forward to continuing to work on this. I think it'll be a great project for the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions for legal counsel or the developer?
I had one question, Mr. Buckholz, and that is regarding the issue that we are dealing with tonight. Tonight, we are dealing with the intent of the resolution, and we are not moving forward with the ordinance. And the reason we've deferred the ordinance is to hopefully be able to work out and, you know, work things out with the administration. And we've still got the hearings, so we want to make sure that we comply and conform with the process. ADC is holding a special meeting that's going to be coming up. I know that the University of New Mexico completed their study. Also, the developers have done their study. The county has also incorporated a study because they are going to be providing some of the funding also. So let's make it clear that tonight, we are not going to be voting on the ordinance. We are just going to be voting on the intent of the resolution, and hopefully, we can work together with the administration to come up with some answers to make this work for Topgolf and for residents of our community.
Mr. President, that's correct. We had a lengthy hearing at Development Commission last Thursday, and part of that hearing was a request that we handle this in this fashion. And so they deferred and graciously agreed to have a special meeting within the next two weeks to deal with the result of those discussions. In contemplating the best way to do that before you folks, we knew that you had a resolution and an ordinance. The resolution is an expression of intent. The ordinance is the actual action. Counselor Gibson deferred the ordinance earlier tonight, and that is not being heard tonight. All we're hearing now is a resolution that expresses your interest and encouragement to go forward, to complete these negotiations, and with any good fortune, we'll be back again in two weeks to have the ordinance heard.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Mr. President, just before we pass the resolution, which is our intent to do this, if you don't mind, I'd like to hear from the administration. I know there are a lot of details here that need to be sorted out before we pass the ordinance, but perhaps they could just give us a summary of their top-line position here and their concerns that we might need to address.
And I was just going to ask them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Nyer, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis. So first, I just want to say that this has been a great example of us being able to work together on something that we don't necessarily see eye to eye on, and I always appreciate when we can do that in a respectful and amicable way, and this is a great example of doing that. Our initial, one of our major initial concerns was the process, in the sense that this was headed on a path to circumvent the ADC, the Albuquerque Development Commission. But with your help, we were able to sort of right that ship. We were able to get the economic development analysis and the economic impact analysis from the Bureau of Business and Economic Research. We were able to have that presentation. The ADC heard and deferred and asked us to keep working on it. So I feel like we have corrected course on that particular concern. Our second concern had to do with the project participation agreement. And look, I've known Mr. Buckholz for a long time. He's taught me a lot of things I know. I used to do this for a living, too. And the city would never accept the version of a project participation agreement that I would draft if I were representing a client, nor should they, right? It's our job to negotiate back. And I appreciate also that we have been given the authority, as the administration, to revise that project participation agreement and work with council and Topgolf to make that as protective of the city as we possibly can. Again, we feel we've righted the ship on that, and hopefully, we'll come to an agreement that really protects the city and the city's resources. I think the place where we're going to have to continue to respectfully and amicably disagree is just on the merits of the project itself. The Bieber analysis shows that it just doesn't pencil in terms of the 10-year recoupment. There may be room to disagree with that on methodological basis, but we happen to agree with it. It's also not economic-based jobs, in the sense that it doesn't necessarily create exports. But, you know, that's okay. We can have that disagreement from time to time. We're always going to stand behind what we consider to be our core economic platform of supporting especially locally grown businesses. And when we have so many businesses out there struggling, especially along the ART corridor, the idea of financing this project, to this extent, just is not in keeping with our values. Topgolf sounds super awesome and fun, so it's not about the actual project. Sounds great, super fun. If it's going to be as successful as it sounds like it will be, they probably don't need $3 million from the city. And so that's just where we are on the merits. But, you know, that's a different question. So we're going to continue to support making this happen in an expeditious way, if that's what the council desires. We're going to continue to support protecting the city's interests through the project participation agreement, and we're just going to agree to disagree on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Very briefly, Mr. President, Ms. Nyer, can you just help me understand just a little bit, so that we can set up perhaps the conversation for next time? The administration's sort of objection or concern about the financing piece. As I read the new Bieber analysis, I saw that Bieber recommended or suggested that the city would recover about 820,000... that the city would recover about $820,000 in new GRT from construction from this project. And as the resolution is intended or as is drafted currently, we would expend $826,000 in some type of support for roadway construction and either cash or LEEDA or something. And so it seems to me that as far as the city's estimate or Bieber's estimate for construction, GRT return to the city, the construction piece seems to at least even out for us. Is that sort of the administration's understanding as well? I'm trying to break this into two parts, I think. Construction and operation, and how those two incentives work together.
You know, I think that one of the interesting things about the project participation agreement was that it sort of asked us to agree that the construction would have a certain value without waiting to see what that value actually was. But yes, if the project works out the way that it was predicted to, we would be okay in that first phase. It's in the second phase, the increment financed phase, where according to Bieber, it didn't pencil to meet that requirement in the ordinance to recoup the city's investment over 10 years. That said, you know, it's actually the opposite in terms of what the administration considers to be the good and the bad parts of the package. Actually, the increment financed piece makes a little more sense to us because the developers and the Topgolf has taken the risk. If they don't generate the GRT, they don't get the money. The difficult part for us is that upfront payment of $500,000 where the city then is really at sole risk for the project not going as planned. Of course, everybody wants it to go as planned. If it goes as planned, it'll be great. But this is just not how the administration views to be the best use of those upfront dollars.
Mr. President, I want to turn it back to you because I know you've been working on this. But Ms. Nyir, I heard that, and I just want to clarify, and help me with this. I agree. I think the increment, GRT increment for operations is a better deal for the city because we're all in this together. If they're successful, then we share in that GRT, and if not, we don't. And they don't either. But what I read from the two reports was that the estimated GRT for construction, which would be the first 18 months or so, the return according to Bieber was $820,000 by the end of fiscal year 19 for the city. And that the new GRT was 800, excuse me, and the city was going to expend $826,000 during that same amount of time. So essentially, the city's cash and roadway improvement incentives would be recouped based on the construction that Topgolf has said they have to do in order to do this. And Bieber agrees with that analysis. In fact, Bieber was more generous, I think, to Topgolf than the county's analysis in that regard a little bit. Does that seem to reconcile with what the administration believes? That we'd essentially recover the construction cost and then have to just deal with that operation GRT down the road?
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis. I think that the disagreement is just on that risk-sharing piece. So yes, if everything works out as planned, then maybe that would be the net result. But the best-laid plans of mice and men sometimes go astray. And we may not see that result. So, you know, we have talked and continue to work with the council about the possibility of moving more of the risk away from the city by using a different proportion of the increment. I think the administration would be more amenable to an approach like that that shifts some of that risk away. It's the upfront payment of the $500,000. Even though I understand your point about timing, it still doesn't address the risk shifting. And one point I neglected to mention was also, in the originally drafted ordinance, there was a provision about sort of setting aside the LEEDA ordinance and in favor, sort of to the extent this deal contradicts with it, we're going to set it aside, not just the standard repealer language. But there was an extra sentence in there that just gives us pause from a legal perspective. And we would hope that if we, if y'all decide to move forward with this, that we could address that concern. Because we never want to send the message that we're going to bend or break the rules for one particular deal. I don't think anybody here wants to do that. And so we would hope we could address that as well.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. And I agree. I think I would encourage the council to, and I know we would support those clawbacks and job incentives that we put in every PPA. But I, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that clarification, Ms. Nyir. I think it's one of those where I, we have to decide the risk reward. I think the numbers bear out that if they build that much stuff, we'll get that much money back. But the others are important. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nyir. Let's go to Counselor Gibson. We have a floor amendment that is being sponsored by Counselor Gibson and myself. Counselor Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is floor amendment number one to R-28. On page three, strike Section 1 in its entirety and replace it with the following new Section 1. Quote, "Section 1, that the following amount is hereby appropriated to the program strategy as indicated from unreserved fund balance for fiscal year 2018." It's from the general fund, 110, $500,000. Number two, on page three, after line 33, insert the following. Quote, "DMD, miscellaneous fund 305, Topgolf Economic Development Project, transfer from fund 110, $500,000. The scope of the project is to provide the operator of the Topgolf project with economic development assistance for land building or infrastructure necessary for the Topgolf project to be constructed at the former beach water park site at I-25 and Montano." And the explanation for this is that this amendment appropriates a transfer of $500,000 of fiscal year 18 unencumbered general fund balance to the capital acquisition fund to provide the support for the Topgolf Economic Development Project in lieu of the LEEDA cash. Moving out for approval?
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Are there any questions from this council? Seeing all those in favor of floor amendment number one to R-18-28, signify by saying yes and raise your hand. Yes, those opposed? That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill. Are there any questions? Counselor Winter?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments. I know that Topgolf representatives have been here now for over 12 months. And I know they've been working with the Economic Development Department. There were some issues that came up there. But I want to thank the Economic Development Department for opening their doors and trying to work with Topgolf. I believe that this project would be a tremendous benefit to the community. I know that, Ms. Nyir, I'm also very concerned that when we put this development agreement together, the PPA, that we protect the taxpayers and the citizens of our community. And in two weeks, hopefully, we can get to that point. And then once we hear back from the ADA and we are following the process, that they will also give their recommendations. But we are going to create 350 new jobs, 123, which will be full-time jobs, and 30, and at least 32 hours a week, and 227 will be part-time jobs. I've also been told by the Topgolf representatives that the facility will be available to our high school students free of charge when the facility is available, and also to the Notre Dame Scholarship Fund, who also teaches golf. I think that would be a tremendous asset to the young kids of our community. And I think that Mr. Buckholz talked briefly on the money that we are not receiving now. Over a 20-year period, we will collect over $5 million in property taxes. And they did not come in and request the IRBs. I just think this will be, people looking to locate here in Albuquerque, businesses that want to become, you know, open up a business here in this community, will look at entertainment venues. And I think Topgolf will be at the top of that list when we're trying to get economic development into our community. I just think that there's been a tremendous amount of work that has been put into this project. And I really believe that this will be a tremendous asset to our city. I myself have never attended a Topgolf venue. But I have heard from many people from the community. I've received many calls saying that Topgolf is a top entertainment venue wherever they've gone. And it's been a tremendous experience. And I would hope that the Albuquerque residents would have that same experience in being able to attend one of these facilities and not have to travel to El Paso or to Phoenix or other quadrants of the country. But again, we still have some work to do. I agree with Ms. Nyir on that. I also agree with Counselor Davis that we've got to make sure that the taxpayers of our community are protected as we go through this process. But I truly believe in the end. Because over a 10-year period, we're going to create over, I think, $10 million or $1.8 million for the city, which we're not generating right now in sales tax. And part of that increment will go back to Topgolf. Again, there will be some upfront money by the city, as was mentioned by one of the speakers earlier from Topgolf. You know, other cities have also provided incentives to bring Topgolf to their community. And hopefully, we can get this resolved with the administration and move forward and bring in a venue that I think will be a tremendous asset to the city of Albuquerque. Are there any questions? Counselor Gibson, would you like to close? And Counselor Penya?
I think just about everything has been said. And I think that we've certainly got enough studies out there done on this. And I think that we have seen like the, maybe the worst view and maybe the best view of possibilities out there. Bieber assumed zero economic-based jobs. I think, you know, that's pretty dour, a dour look into the future. More pessimistic than even I am. But then we've seen other reports that were much more generous. So I think that probably the reality is somewhere in the middle. You know, this, this is a comparatively small investment for a long-term return on our investment. And, you know, I really hope that we can come together and find some common ground and get this done. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Penya to close? Counselor Bordego, we've already closed, if you don't mind. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for R-28 as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Let's go back to general public comments. We had some individuals still signed up to speak. Lindsay Wood, Tony Perard, Mike Alvarez, Don Schrader, and Judy Young. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Good evening, honored council members. My name's Lindsay Wood. I'm a longtime resident of Albuquerque. And I realized that I had no idea what our city flag looked like, despite having lived here all these years until I Googled it. And of course, it's the red flag there on the back wall behind Counselor Benton's shoulder. An inverse of the state flag with the word Albuquerque written under it, which makes me feel like we don't even have an Albuquerque city flag. So I would like to propose to you that Albuquerque has a city flag redesign contest. I think it would be a great way to have our, this artistic population that we have participate and give us a stunning, beautiful flag. I will keep my comments short, but I do have a handout for you that shows other cities that have done this and the beautiful flags that they've come up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. President? Counselor Davis? I promise I won't comment on everything tonight. I just want to say, I think this is something that some of our APS school students started two, three years ago, right after I came to the city council. And so if, as we were speaking earlier, if you'll reach out to me after this, we'll connect you with some of those kids.
I will, and I'll also email everybody with that handout. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Tony Perard?
Thank you. Hello, I'm Tony Perard. And I've been watching the disrespect that the city council keeps throwing at the public and the disrespect the public has to throw back at the city council as well. I'd like to thank the people that keep up the fight to end corruption in this city and throughout the state. Art Tynenbaum, Simon Polakowski, Tad Nemenski, Silvio D'Angelo, and many others that need to seek justice for police murders. The coward Damon Martinez of the DOJ did absolutely nothing to reform Albuquerque Police Department. Damon Martinez is such a coward, he sent US Marshals to my house twice to warn me to stay out of the settlement agreement, which was a direct threat on my life as well. I'm still in it, folks. Media doesn't care about stuff like that because media continues to cover up. In 1961, Robert F. Kennedy was appointed Attorney General of the United States Department of Justice. His favorite quote was, "If one person or one man's rights are denied, the rights of all others are endangered." Robert F. Kennedy must be rolling over in his grave knowing the corruption within the Department of Justice and the sweeping of police murders under the rug. I vote to send Damon Martinez to Supermax Prison and not to Congress. Damon Martinez has cost the taxpayers of the city of Albuquerque millions of dollars on useless and unseen police reforms. And the most recent present to taxpayers and the DOJ is more wasted taxpayer dollars on the homeless project and drug programs, which have done nothing to do with the settlement agreement. Are we taxpayers paying to keep people hooked on drugs? Tim Keller, why aren't you at these meetings at city council? The taxpayers require that you are here at these meetings. Tim, why are you falling deeper into the rabbit hole? Citizens have the answer to APD's problems.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Mike Alvarez, Don Schrader, followed by Judy Young.
How you doing, council? I'm here to speak to the public of Albuquerque, how important it is to vote. It's very hard to realize that one-third of our population are people that cannot vote because they're either convicted felons or homeless. And the people that don't have that problem are too late to even get out of their house to go vote. What's wrong with the public of Albuquerque? We need to vote because it's very important. It's one of your issues that you were born with, and people don't even care. So a lot of people say we cannot solve the problems of Albuquerque. But how are we going to solve it when people don't care? Thank you.
Thank you. Don Schrader? Welcome.
Almost half of federal income pays for US wars, past, present, and future. We enjoy our hands to work, to garden, to play music, to eat food, to make love. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to destroy other people's precious hands in war. We enjoy seeing flowers, sunsets, trees, mountains, written words, loved ones, attractive bodies. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to blind people in war. We pay to severely burn babies, to rip open the flesh of grandmas and grandpas. We enjoy walking, running, dancing. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to paralyzed children who will never run again. We enjoy our homes, protection from storms and cold, a place to feel safe with loved ones. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to bomb homes. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to turn our sons and daughters into professional hired killers to murder on command with no conscience. If we pay federal income tax, we pay to murder our sisters and brothers abroad and to make enemies all over the world. I have paid no federal income tax for war for 39 years. I enjoy living simply far below the taxable level.
Thank you, Judy Young. Followed by Rudolph Serrano. Welcome, Judy.
Good afternoon, president, councilors. I am from a neighborhood close to Four Hills. And I recently learned that the city does not have a procedure in place to protect children at the community centers. And I had to experience this firsthand because on April the 26th, we had our annual Neighborhood Association meeting. And at that meeting, a person turned a sonic assault weapon on the audience because he was unhappy that he was not reelected. This is the same type of weapon that was used in Cuba on our ambassador. And all of the Americans of Cuba had to leave Cuba. Since that time, I have had to seek medical care. I have been severely injured. And I have, and nine others, submitted a complaint to the city. And we asked that this person be banned from community centers. That was denied. This person, instead of having a metal box with a hose that comes out of it that injures a person's hearing, could have had a gun very easily. This person has posted that he would use a that he would use a machete in the park for rule of law. We have submitted all of this information, and we have not gotten any response. I am concerned about there being no procedure in place to protect people at community centers here in Albuquerque, and I hope you will see to it that there is a procedure in place to protect people like myself and others.
Thank you. Rudolph Serrano, followed by Athena, Crystal DeLulu, followed by Tad Neminski, and the last speaker will be Simon Polakowski. So if you're here, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome, Mr. Serrano.
Good night. When I refer to our daughters, I refer to our daughters in Albuquerque, not personally your daughters. I wanted to make that clear. There's a, and I recall in the journal that says that we're 50% a matrical, you know. And I've been analyzing patriarchal, matrical systems all my life. I'm part of a matrical system, and they don't work. And there's one explanation to say why. Let's say this water right here is there. This has electricity to the brain. You put in a female and male, and every time you press it, you get an orgasm. A guy will go like, "Ugh," for eight hours, and then he'll stop and drink water. A woman will go, "Ugh, ugh." Four days later, she will die. The cause of death is that she never reached the water. Woman does not know when to stop, and that's in the wiring. And we have a governor that wants to be over there approving child rape before 13, so they don't get pregnant at 14. I'm talking about Ms. Grisham, you know, that we cannot tolerate. Our city cannot afford that. You know, a woman needs to come to understanding, you know, that we have a paternal system on because of a reason. And if they can come with reasoning, then yes, come up. You know, I've been pushing for women for 20 years until they start raping children. But enough is enough. And this is a national security threat. I'm going to bring it up to the United Nations if you guys don't start moving. Thank you.
Next speaker is Athena, Crystal DeLulu. I think I pronounced that incorrectly. And she's left. Tad Neminski. And the last speaker will be Simon Polakowski.
Thank you. My name is Tad Neminski. Here is Council Sanchez. That is your math. One, this is drop on the bucket. 1.8 million in taxes a year. 260 million over 20 years, taxpayers' money. Oh, no, you can raise it. Taxes, no problem. Mayor raised it, Sunski took office, 38%, 316%? Of course. Well, that is your math. That's your accountability. Now, well, yet that's another milking cow. Well, I know this location. Union owned it. They never succeeded. And for years and years, they've been land. Now, you wanted, they wanted 260 million developers. Well, think about it. I know a little bit history. Well, APD for hire. APD working in Walmart, Walmart, the Home Depot, everywhere with security. Everywhere. And get overtime. Yes, they get paid overtime. And you want to get cops? No way to be founded. You call in 911, five minutes to respond, answer telephone, 911, and three, four hours to get, answer, excuse me, about one hour to answer 242 cops. That is where is APD. That's APD work. This is progress. You all have to wake up and be real to the people.
Thank you. Simon Polakowski is the last speaker.
Counselor President, counsel, I've been coming here for five years. The reason was because when I used to have a program on Channel 27 Public Access, I had a live program unrehearsed, and I could speak to people who were willing to listen. I've been coming here because I was denied this by the present management of Channel 27. I wouldn't come down here, but I felt that there was a need for live television in Albuquerque for the average person, the people that come down here and wish to be heard. Maybe, you know, you don't want, you don't want to listen to them. I can understand that. But maybe there are people in the community that would like to hear what these people have to say. And I believe these people deserve a podium where they can converse with the public over a large audience. These people aren't corporations. They can't come in here and ask for subsidies. And we had, when we had a public access station that allowed the average person to develop a program, this gave them the opportunity to reach a wider audience. Commercial TV is dedicated towards money, the making of money. It's a corporation, it's an operation, a money-making operation. Public access is for the average person. It allows them to seek a wider audience with issues that they believe are very important to themselves and to the community. I've been coming, like I said, five years. The people I've met that come down here are very concerned about this city, this state, this country. They're concerned about the community that they are a part of. They need a place where they can communicate with their fellow citizens, because the media does not want to do that. Let them speak to the people that wish to hear them. May the next provider allow that. But give us back our First Amendment rights. And hopefully, I'm hoping that this president administration will find someone like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are now under item 11. That is announcements.
Had you signed up? That's fine. Go ahead. You're welcome.
Mr. President, councilors, my name is Marsha McKinnon, and I'm here to talk about a few things I haven't heard of with regard to the illicit drug use. I have some possible solutions. First of all...
Do you want to bring your microphone down just a bit?
Pardon?
Do you want to bring your microphone down just a bit or speak into it? Thank you.
Did you hear anything?
Me did.
Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, I understand we're supposed to call non-emergency fire department to pick up syringes. However, recently, I've learned some horrifying information about our general population has been picking them up. A 311 operator told me it was the homeowner's responsibility. 242 cop told me it was the homeowner's responsibility if it was on our side of the alley. And even non-emergency, two firemen told me I could pick up a plastic bottle and scoop them up. These are extreme health and safety hazards. Only trained personnel. There's a matter of no recapping. There's body fluids and blood on the syringe as well as the needle. And there are proper procedures that, in picking up, handling, and disposing of syringes. And there's no follow-up. If someone does get a stick, there should be, that information has to be factored in, who to call. The other thing is that, well, if they get a stick, they have to have somebody to call. Also, our eyewitness accounts of actual shooting up does not factor in with reasonable cause to search. Couple, if we were allowed to have our eyewitness accounts, our film, is that it?
That is, your time has expired. But thank you very much.
But anyways, I'll get back to...
Appreciate you coming down. Okay, we are now on item 11, and that is announcements. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, June 11th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Borrego?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 13th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate what Mr. Alvarez said, tomorrow is Election Day for the primaries, so if you're a member of a party, you should get out and vote. Also, this week, starting on Friday, Shakespeare and the Plaza will be back. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that's happening. So it'll begin June 8th, this Friday, and go through July 1st. And it will be on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturday, and Sunday nights at 7:45 at Civic Plaza. And they're presenting two Shakespeare plays, As You Like It and The Merry Wives of Windsor. So they don't present them both on the same night, obviously, but those are the two that'll be rotating. And it's a lot of fun. It's really a great event. If you haven't seen it, it's worth it, and it's free. And we are pleased to be part of the, part of the funding of that program. So I hope everyone can get out, June 8th through July 1st on Civic Plaza.
Thank you, Counselor Benton, for those announcements. Let's move to item 13, which is approvals. That is EC 138. It's a Sunport 1 North Hanger lease and operating agreement. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. Are there any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under final actions. Item A, Counselor Jones, O-17.
Thank you, Mr. President. O-17 is approving a project involving CSI Aviation, Inc., pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and the City Ordinance, floor substitute O-410. I move a do-pass.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Counselor Davis?
I promise I didn't have something on everything, but I do have something on this. Ms. Nyir, if you can help us, I think that you can help us through this. You and I and your staff helped us work through this last week. I just want to get it on the record. This council passed our immigrant-friendly ordinance not long ago, and we considered issues around contractors that might lease city facilities for immigration support. And it's been publicly reported and alluded to in the application from CSI, that CSI has a number of federal contracts supporting immigration services, or did at some point. Has the administration done its due diligence to establish whether the vendor, whether CSI intends to use our facilities to support that in any way, or if they have current federal contracts relating to immigration services?
Counselor President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, yes. So there were a couple of requirements in the ordinance that was initially passed. One had to do with making sure that general funds did not go to support any activity that was related to immigration enforcement. And we've been able to do that out of an abundance of caution. Anytime our staff is working on CSI, we have billed that out to a non-general fund in anticipation of any concerns. However, we also understand that at the current time, CSI does not have that federal immigration enforcement contract. Furthermore, we have to thank Counselor Penya and you for passing that immigration and sponsoring, and the council for passing that immigration-friendly ordinance, because it made our lives real easy when it comes to CSI. There is an obligation to follow that ordinance and all local ordinances in both the project participation agreement and the lease. And we've also obtained the written commitment of CSI that they will not do anything in violation specifically of the immigration-friendly ordinance. So we feel like we've covered our bases on that.
Thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate that. I know your staff, in particular, Mr. Aguilar's legal staff, worked a lot to be sure we got those pieces right, and I appreciate the due diligence. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Jones to close.
Thank you. I urge your support.
We have a motion and a second for O-17. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on item B, which is Counselor Benton, O-14.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a do-pass of O-14.
We have a motion and a second, or a second by Counselor Borrego.
And councilors, this is amending the Traffic Code, Section 8511, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited. No signs required. To add bicycle lanes to the list of places where no person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle except when necessary to avoid conflict with other traffic or in compliance with law or directions of a police officer or traffic control device. And amending the Traffic Code, Section 85115, parking not to obstruct traffic. To clarify, bicycle lanes are traffic lanes. Councilors, the history on this is that we presently have a policy that it's illegal to park in a bicycle lane only, but it is only enforced where there are signs. So this was trying to achieve some clarity with regard to what's expected. And I think importantly, staff came up with the very simple concept to just, to clarify that a bicycle lane is a type of travel lane. And travel lanes shall not be, and it's not in the public interest that they be parked upon. But I'll let Petra maybe finish up. She's the brains behind the bill. I've just got my name on it.
Petra, go and proceed.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I think you've summarized it pretty well. This is something that came from the Bike Ways and Trails Facility Plan. This was adopted by the city in 2015, and this plan recommended some very specific changes to the traffic code. And these are the changes that are before you this evening.
Excuse me, go and have a seat. We haven't gotten to public comments yet.
The amendment, the amendment to the traffic code, when it was presented at LUPS, included support from both the Albuquerque Police Department and the Department of Municipal Development. APD spoke about how this revision would make for a safer environment and that it clarifies the enforcement. And we also took this to GABAC, the Greater Albuquerque Cycling Advisory Committee, and they also supported this.
Thank you, Petra. Mr. President, also, just to be clear, there was a, I think we amended this at committee to add a six-month effective period, so it won't go into effect immediately. We know that modern day, we do not generally put bike lanes in R1 residential-type areas, but some of them exist around town, and there could be some conflicts. There could be places where people need to be able to park on the street, and they are on a residential street, which normally nowadays would not qualify for a bike lane. This gives us all a chance to report in on where we see possibly problematic conflicts of that sort. And I know there's one in Counselor Davis's district on campus where it's kind of a true contradiction, where we've got parking signs and a bike lane. So which one is which? That's the kind of situation. We want to kind of ferret out during the six-month phase-in period.
Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is the right thing to do. It's a good thing to do, but it's going to be kind of painful for my district, because we're really trying to encourage people to, you know, park in front of the house, you know, use the on-street parking to help slow down traffic. And there are a few streets, not very many of them, but there are a few streets where, you know, bikes are used. Alvarado comes to mind. Moon is another one where there is a bike lane, but there's also parking on it. And Moon, for example, that's a really good example, where we would like to slow the traffic, but we certainly also want to, you know, accommodate bicyclists. So I'm not sure where we're going to go with that, but how we're going to, you know, take care of situations like that. But I'm sure that with the planning staff, who always has good ideas, ways to do things, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
We have one individual signed up to speak under public comments on this agenda item, and that is Tad Neminski.
Priority. That's right. Law coming up. Lawsuit coming up against you. Now, bicycles. That is same as golf. Wasteful. Penalizing motorists, taking lanes away. Now, bicycles, that is same as golf, wasteful. Penalizing motorists, taking lanes away. Now parking, yes, parking. $3 district attorney wasted valuable time last week and I get his SOG district. District Attorney over $3 parking citation. And that is yours and Judge asked me to talk to you. I said, no, they won't listen. You have power and authority. You can change it because they won't change it, anything. Now let's go to bicycle. Who's behind it? What, Duke City and all this high price? I should get paid, Benton? No, I can prove it yet. And so everyone of you, this other issue. Golf, well, I know lawyers. That's right. Do your, undo your dirty laundry. Somebody has to do your dirty laundry. And people in Albuquerque needs to know who are you. Now, why don't you create a law against bicycle riders? They should have insurance, niceness too, and so on, like motorists. And now are they obeying laws? Well, no, they not obeying their traffic laws.
That concludes public comment. We're back on the bill. Are there any other questions? Counselor Benton to close.
Urge your support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of O-14. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item E, which is Counselor Benton and Counselor Davis, committee substitute R-18.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move a due pass of committee substitute R-18.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis.
And, Mr. President, this is directing the Planning Department to convene a committee of public and private entities to conduct an analysis of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with intentions to replace the currently adopted 2009 Energy Conservation Code. And, councilors, the, and, Mr. President, the, the 2009 is the current code. 2018 is the, the most modern version of the energy code. And there have been also entities who have adopted an interim code, which is the 15, I believe it is. And the, my understanding of what I know so far about the 2018 code, it's actually a little bit more user-friendly than the 2015. So it's, it's, it's worked through some of the issues that always occur whenever we update a code. And especially in the case of the, of these energy conservation measures, trying to give, I believe, as I understand it, more options and more performance-based approaches to, to compliance. So, Ms. Schultz, can you add anything to that?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I think you've covered it quite well. I'll just reiterate that this only calls for an analysis to be done. We're not adopting any codes with this resolution. It calls for the Planning Department to conduct that analysis and convene a committee of stakeholders who, an update like this, it would directly affect. So we're just doing an analysis at this point and we would hopefully bring something back for adoption later this year, early next year.
And, Mr. President, if I just could quickly, just also to be clear, we have talked with our building safety officials about this. And, you know, they're, they had a concern that, that a lot of their staff time would be taken up by doing a side-by-side comparison. So I'm working with them to provide some consultant help so that they don't take their valuable time analyzing it. But they'll still get a good side-by-side understanding of how this looks compared to our current energy code.
Are there any questions from this council? Counselor Gibson.
So I have questions about this. Should I direct them, I guess, to, towards Shanna? So between 2009 and 2018, that's nine years. That's a long time. Have other cities adopted this or states? I'm not really sure how that, how that happens, what process. If the states are adopted or the cities adopt it, whether the states do or not. Has that happened in other places throughout the country?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, yes, there are other states who have adopted the 2012 and the 2015 versions. They come out with new versions every three years. At this point, there is not a municipality who has adopted the 2018 version. So if we conduct this analysis, we would be the first. But this would, this would kind of bring us ahead of the game.
So is there an element of risk in adopting these updates? I mean, I'm wondering why we just don't do this as a matter of course going forward. I really don't know. I don't, I don't know anything about these.
Counselor Benton.
Mr. President and Counselor Gibson, the international code organization is always in the business of updating these. So it's not uncommon that we would be, the date on the, on the version of the code would be a couple of years, a few years back. But it's true that nine years back is, is fairly, fairly outdated. And so that, as Shanna explained, some entities have adopted the 2015, which was a step forward. The feedback we've heard about the 2015 is that this version of 2018 actually addresses some of the, some of the, just logistical and detail issues within the 2015 without making it a whole lot more difficult to comply with, actually making it easier to comply with. So whether you're talking about an energy code or any other kind of building code or even the fire codes are all updated on this three-year schedule, so.
Are there risks? That's what I'm trying to find out. Is there a risk for adopting this?
I don't, I don't know, I can't think of any risk. I mean, obviously, people in the industry are, and even our own folks are, just human nature is not, is not going to be wanting to change this often. But we do it on a regular basis with all our building codes, electrical codes, plumbing codes, et cetera.
Any other questions? Let's go to Counselor Davis and then we'll go to Counselor Benton to close.
I'm fine, Mr. President. I think Counselor Gibson, the answer there is that's the purpose of the committee is to take all that input and look at those evaluations. It'd be great for us to be on the other side of a list for once, leading the charge. But we should hear from the developers about how much it'll cost and what the right balance is. And I appreciate Counselor Benton for leading this initiative. Urge your support.
Counselor Benton.
Urge your support.
We have a motion and a second for committee substitute R-18. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item F, Counselor Gibson and Counselor Borrego, R-31.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have someone here to speak on behalf of Mariachi Spetacular? I was afraid of that. Mr. President, I'm thinking that maybe we may need to defer this because they, I would like for them to be here for this.
We have a motion and a second for a deferral of R-31 until the next council meeting. Would that, that'd be fine? Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And we are on the final bill, which is item G, Counselor Benton, R-32.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a due pass for R-32.
We have a motion and a second for due pass on R-32.
And rather than read the old title of this, because the floor substitute will change the title, I would like to move floor substitute for R-32, which is in your iPads. And the, the floor substitute acknowledges, and I want to thank the administration for how expeditiously they've already dealt with one, the first part of the original bill, which they have put out an RFP and we have received a proposal. But this is just taking care of some minor funding needs within, within this project. And the reason that this was timely is that the Mortgage Finance Authority actually has some funding that, that we can leverage and there are deadlines associated with their funding. So the floor substitute is in your iPads and, I don't know, do we have copies of the floor substitute available? Okay, yeah, just, if you would, please, yeah. So this really just acknowledges, the floor substitute acknowledges that RFP has been issued. But it also does clarify, councilors, that this is really just a contingency, if you will, in the bill to make clear that because the organizations that can apply for this type of project are already pre-approved housing developers in the city and there are only very few of them in the city already, that, that if the council had a bona fide proposal in hand, that we wouldn't necessarily have to be going through the RFP process. So that's just sort of covering us. The, this also moves the goalposts of the deadline to August, which, which is the Mortgage Finance Authority, New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority deadline. So I'll move a, move the substitute.
We have a motion and a second for floor substitute R-32. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. We're back on the bill. You going to move a deferral?
Yes, so since we've moved the floor substitute, we're required to defer this. And I move deferral to June 18th.
We have a motion and a second to defer floor substitute R-32 until June 18th. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That passes unanimously. And if there is no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.